I'd like to call to order this school board meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 624. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ellison.
Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
Strife Oji.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Arcan.
Here.
Beloit.
Here.
All right, thank you. I would ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have before us tonight an agenda. I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Strife Oji and a second.
Second.
A second by Ms. Daniels. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. And we have an agenda. We also have before us a consent agenda, which are the regular monthly things that come before us, including donations. And as always, our community is incredibly generous to support our students and teachers and community. So we thank you for that. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Newmaster and a second.
Second.
A second by Ms. Beloit. Any questions or comments? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ellison.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife Oji.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcan.
Aye.
Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. It is now time for the public forum portion of the meeting. There were no requests submitted to speak. So we will move right into our first informational item, C1, Student Recognition. So tonight, we celebrate students who have earned awards as AP Scholars, AP Scholars with Honor, and AP Scholars with Distinction. Congratulations to students, and thank you to the staff and family members who supported the students along the way. Thank you, and congratulations to all of our students. We'll move into our second informational item, C2, Activities and Athletics Update. Mr. Pellicone.
Good evening, Chair Ellison and members of the board. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak just briefly about how the start of the school year has gone, specific to the Athletics and Activities Office and our happenings. Excited to see many of you out and about at the events that we are having, and I apologize if I get long-winded. It's been an exciting start. So we began our year with our theme for our first 60 days of Do I Belong Here? And as many of you know, our athletics and activities are things that many of our kids use to connect to the building, and it is our goal to make sure that most, if not all, of our kids are tied to the building outside of the school day doing something other than their regular classes. We obviously have our values of relationships, ownership, awareness, and respect, and our Activities Office is doing everything we can to follow those values and to help our students to feel like they belong here. Things we have done in co-curriculars to help get our kids involved, we're doing everything we can to make a big school feel small. It is a large school, both in size and population. And what our activities hopefully, one of the many things that allows them to do is to be a part of a smaller family, whether it's a team, a part of a performance, in a group, getting together with something that they're interested in with others who are also interested in those things, hopefully helps make the school feel smaller than it is. We did have a freshman orientation day where our link crew, our juniors and senior leaders, helped them get adjusted to high school and became a person that they could connect to that is a leader in the school. It's an outstanding day, and it ends with an activities fair that we offered at the end of the day. We furthered that with various activities during the homecoming week that we just had, which I will talk about in a little bit. We do have a school-wide goal of getting 85% of our student body to be able to identify a sport, an activity, a fine art, a school program, or a student interest-based club that they belong to, that they have joined by the end of the year. And I can tell you that in this fall alone, we have 1,100 students plus who are currently involved in a sport, a fine art, an activity, or a school program. That is not even counting our student clubs, which are just getting started. And so we are well on our way to reaching that goal of 85%. And 1,100 students is as big as it's been in my ears here. We did have homecoming. It was an absolutely fantastic week, first time under one roof in many, many years, and you could feel it, you could see it, you could hear it. I've got all sorts of pictures in the next couple of slides to talk about. It got kicked off last Sunday with our medallion hunt, which was a fun adventure that I actually got to be a part of, finding both the student and the staff medallion on Wednesday after several days of clues. Thankfully, our two homecoming advisors are English teachers. They were outstanding with the clues. It did much better than I could have with the creativity of them. We also had our bubble soccer tournament, which I will have a picture of in a coming slide. And then we had a carnival, which was very connecting for not only our high school, we wanted homecoming to be bigger than just the high school. And so we kicked off our homecoming week with our carnival, where we had food trucks, we had many inflatables there, and we had several families come out. I got a good picture from the third floor of our building. Thankfully, we've got lots of glass. It's easy to take pictures out of. Going through the week, we had various themes throughout the day. My specific excitement was anything but a backpack day. It was interesting seeing what the kids came up with, from rolling around their books in a spare tire, to an old lawnmower with the engine removed in a compartment on top of it, to little kid doll shopping carts that they drug around the school with them. So it was very exciting. And then obviously, Friday was a big day with our pep fest in the morning, the parade, followed by the football game at night. And then Saturday, we had a good fundraising event, followed by our school dance. Making sure I don't miss anything here. Different pictures from the week. If you look at the, just going to go through the pictures that I had, the events throughout the week, the upper left-hand corner is a musical group that performed at our talent show, which was Tuesday night, which was well-attended. It was our first year doing a talent show as a part of our homecoming. It took place here in the theater, because our fall musical was having rehearsal in our theater, so we did it here in the theater. Had a pretty decent crowd and had a dozen acts that performed. That was one of the acts. The middle-top picture is a picture from bubble soccer on Saturday, or on Sunday. Their homecoming kids got these huge, they're about five feet in diameter, big balloons that you get yourself into and you wear it like a backpack almost, and you go play soccer. We've got them sticking around, so if you want to use them for any reason, feel happy to come get them. It's kind of entertaining. Upper right-hand corner is actually our talent show winner, who also performed at our pep fest. And then in the lower-left-hand corner is that picture that I was talking about of the carnival from the third-floor window, going up into the learning studios. That shows the inflatables and all of the families. Sunday night, we ended that night with Coronation, and so that is a picture from Coronation. And then the lower-right is our pep band practicing to march in the parade, which unfortunately, I don't get the chance to be at because I'm preparing for the football game, but that is them preparing for it. Talk briefly about my two favorite moments from this week that just really hit home for me, as somebody who was blessed to be a part of this transition and going from two school locations to one unified school, that we wouldn't have been able to do in the past, that really were just powerful events showing school spirit and pride. And the first one on the left is our pep band playing on the learning stairs Friday morning before school. Was just an awesome thing to be a part of as you walked into the building, and it was exciting to see the kids perform and the kids listening to the kids perform. It was a great way to start the school spirit day. And then the pep fest. And that might be the best picture I've ever seen in my time here, is our vast majority of our student body at one pep fest. As somebody who spent my first seven years doing pep fest at two buildings and trying to help freshmen and sophomore understand what a pep fest looks like, and juniors and seniors not necessarily involved in a pep fest, to see that happen under one roof was very powerful and really showed our school spirit and our pride in White Bear Lake. It was outstanding to be a part of. Couple of athletic highlights from the fall. Our boys soccer team finished third in the suburban east and actually unfortunately just got eliminated from section play, but had a very successful season from a win-loss under new head coach, Talen Gittens. They ended up having as many wins this year as we've had in the last two years combined. And so it was a really successful year. Lot of growth, lot of change, and I believe our program is going in the right direction. Our girls soccer team finished the season undefeated, won the SCC championship, got the one seed in the sections, is currently the number-one ranked team in the state, and is in our section final championship game tomorrow night at White Bear Lake in our stadium, if you wanted to come over and watch the section final game to go to state. Girls tennis made it to the section semifinals and had one of their best records in many years. We also had two, an individual and a doubles team that was playing today, actually when I left, trying to get to state as individuals. Our girls swim and dive team has new facility improvements at the YMCA, so the bond money also helping go towards those things and help to improve those things. They've got new starting blocks, they've got a new scoring system, and they won their first home meet in a few years. So that was an exciting night for them. Our football team is playing in the new stadium. They currently are in a two-game winning streak, winning on the road two weeks ago at Stillwater, which is an extremely tough opponent, and then winning Friday night at homecoming in front of over 4,000 community members. So if you were a part of that, it was a big crowd. It was fun to be a part of and very exciting. Our volleyball team is 16-11. It's their first season over 500 in many years, and they start their sections next week after the MEA break. Our boys and girls cross-country teams are having a successful year like usual, finishing in the top 10 in a couple of large championship races. They have their conference race tomorrow up at Tanner's Brook, starting at 3:30, and then sections are the following week. And then lastly, our adapted soccer team beat Robinsdale 4-2 at home, and actually, I just came from them beating Wayzetta 4-1 at halftime to come to this presentation. So we've had a wildly successful fall from a sports standpoint. Fine arts events, we've got Legally Blonde as our fall musical coming up in a couple of weeks. Tickets are on sale right now, so please feel free to get those tickets before they sell out. They will be in the theater as the PAC is not quite ready yet, but we are looking forward to having our choir, band, and orchestra concerts in the Performing Arts Center once it is completed late November, early December. But that is our concert schedule. Couple of things, we do love having our community come out to our events. We do offer season ticket passes for our adults. I would like to make one note of mention that I appreciate that you and the district work together, was it a year or two? I think this is our second year of providing free admission to all of our home events for our students. We have what's called the Bear Pass for our students 9 through 12, and as of this morning, we had almost 1,600 passes that were purchased by our students. So we've got 1,600 kids that have gone in and gotten a pass, which is outstanding. So thank you for that. We do have our community member pass, which grants lifetime activity pass to all of our senior citizens. There are currently 1,000 of those passes out there, which is also an outstanding thing to have, to have our senior citizens come into our events. And then lastly, we partner with the Parks and Rec, with the Community Ed and Rec Department to offer our community to come in and use our athletic spaces when we aren't using them. And starting up here in a couple of weeks, our community will be able to go walk on the walking track upstairs every night, Monday through Thursday, from 6 until 9. That is all I have. Thank you for the time, and I am open for any questions or comments about athletics and activities.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Pellicone. Any questions?
I do have a comment.
Dr. Arcan.
I just want to say thank you. One of my fondest memories is when I was at Lincoln Elementary, and we would have the homecoming parade and how special it was, and we would get out of school, we'd come downtown here and go to the parade, and it really felt like that on Friday. The whole community was there. I like the fact that the elementary schools were marching in, and so that felt special for them. And just walking around that parade and seeing the community come together, I felt like we were back, like we were in the 70s, together as one community. So thank you for doing that. I really appreciated that.
Thank you.
Comments? Ms. Thompson.
I had a question, because I haven't remembered when we've won our homecoming game. So when was the last time we won our homecoming football game?
It's been a few years.
It's been a few years?
Yeah.
I just think-
2019, right before COVID.
Okay, yeah. What a great way to like, celebrate the unified high school and for them to get that win. And I took my daughter to the Stillwater game, and when they came out of there, we ran errands, and when they came out, they were like, oh, they're losing. But then when they came out and said that they had won, I mean, to have those two wins back-to-back, and to have the second one be homecoming, and to watch the students run out on the field afterwards at our new stadium there, it was just really, really a wonderful evening and a special moment for our students and the whole community to witness that. So
It's amazing and scary all at the same time. The whole field's still going.
Yes, yeah. And everything seemed to go well. So, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Strife Oji.
And I just, you spoke to this a little bit, Scott, seeing all the elementary schools participate in the parade. And I was talking with the former principal over the weekend, who said they used to not be able to participate-
Who got out too late.
-because of the school time ending too late. So it was fun to see the schools that could participate in that and all of the kids that joined in. Thank you. It was a lovely night.
Thank you.
I also want to thank everybody, all the students and staff who worked on putting homecoming together, because I know it takes a lot of effort to get all of those moving parts together, and it just, it was really joyful.
Yeah, our two advisors, Cassidy Wegworth and Kate Peck, were rock stars this week. They absolutely crushed it. So it was fun.
It was great. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
All right.
Good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move into our first discussion item, D1, First Reading of School Board Policies. So the way that this works, for folks who are not familiar with the process, is that we, the board, will read policies for a first read, and then they will come back to us for approval at a subsequent board meeting. And the first reading allows board members to make comments and suggestions. So tonight, we are reading the school board policies for the first time, 404, excuse me, 404, 405, 541, and 599. Board members, if you have comments or questions, please note the policy number and the page in the board packet. Any comments or questions? Dr. Newmaster.
Just have one question, and I apologize, I don't have the page up, but it's the very first one.
So 405?
And it's a general question.
404.
Yeah. The portion where it talks about everyone, you know, running an ID checked. And I'm just, and it talked about you pay the fee when you sign up or whatever. And I just wondered, what was the fee?
We're talking about the background checks?
Yeah, for volunteers as well as, you know, employees, anyone working or volunteering in the school.
Mr. Mons, could you address that?
Absolutely. So just a couple of points on that front is, they are somewhat variable, but for our volunteers, that's $20. We also offer a lot of assistance there, and a number of our programs come through with free background checks, too, depending on what that looks like. And we do heavily subsidize that cost for both our volunteers and also our employees, because we have background checks that can actually run into the hundreds of dollars, and we make sure that those remain consistent for the folks that are utilizing them.
That makes me understand it. And I'm just wondering, what about the, I was involved with the PTO at Otter for many years, and was a volunteer occasionally for their bingo or whatever. And are they included in that sort of thing?
They're not necessarily. So really, the test that we operate under is, is there any foreseeable circumstance under which that individual is going to be responsible for a student without staff supervision? And so the moment that we say that even may happen, so on a field trip, for instance, if there's going to be a chaperone that may assist students going to use the restrooms, you know, there's absolutely going to be a background check. If it's a volunteer position, like a PTO role, where they're not going to have that kind of supervisory responsibility with students, then no, it's not mandatory in those situations.
Thanks for clarifying. I figured that was probably the case, wandering around the gym, checking people's bingo cards really wasn't-
Yeah.
-a risk. But, okay, thank you.
You bet.
Any other comments or questions about first reading?
I just-
Dr. Arcan.
599 Academic Recognition, and it's that second page, 599-2. We had that discussion, kind of talked earlier. I like the fact that we've added the post-secondary enrollment options to the grade weighting so that it's there. We know it wasn't there before. I think that was an important change.
Yeah, I agree. Any other, okay. So these policies will come before us for the November 12th or a subsequent agenda for second reading and approval. I will move into our first operational item, E1, Action on the 2025 Medical and Dental Insurance Rates. Mr. Mons.
I shouldn't have taken the tour of the room there. So we've got three different recommendations from the district's insurance committee here, one on our health insurance premiums, another on our dental insurance premiums, and then a recommended switch for our long-term disability and our life insurance carrier. I'll take the health insurance first. We're recommending a 6.25% increase to our health insurance premiums, effective January 1, 2025. And just a couple of notes on this. Number one, that increase will ensure that we're able to maintain our reserve balance goal. That's always what drives the discussions that we have about what kind of a premium increase that we need to look at. Another note that I'd like to make is just a huge thank you to our insurance committee. I think we have one of the most collaborative and highly functioning insurance committees of any school district in the state. There's not a year that I've been in White Bear Lake-area schools where we've not made recommended changes to our plans in order to see that we continue to have increases that aren't hitting double-digit numbers on an annual basis. And so continually looking at different levers to pull to try to keep those numbers low. I know 6.25 doesn't feel all that low, but when you look around us, that puts us in a very good place. But again, this year, we had to make very tough decisions around plan design in order to look at that kind of an increase instead of an increase that would have looked, that would have put us into the double digits. So a huge thank you to the team that we work with from One Digital that helps us look at what kind of opportunities are out there, and then to our insurance committee for being really committed to looking at every opportunity to keep our prices as affordable as possible.
So I would recommend, and Mr. Mons, let me know if you agree, that we do all three of these separately?
Sounds good.
Okay. So the recommended action is to approve the district's health premium rates and plan design changes effective January 1, 2025, as presented. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Newmaster. Any questions or comments? Ms. Strife Oji.
Are these rates what staff pay?
No, that's the monthly premium before district contribution.
And that depends on their contract?
The negotiated, yes. So we currently have a situation in which all of our employees have the same district contribution aside from our educators. Our educators have chosen to prioritize a little differently during collective bargaining, and so we have two groups moving through that.
Thank you.
Any further questions? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ellison.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife Oji.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcan.
Aye.
Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. Move into the next, which is dental.
And with dental, this is, you know, a much smaller pot of dollars that we're talking about here. What I would say again is, this 6% increase that we're recommending here will keep our reserve balance where we feel that we need to be operating, to be financially responsible.
So the recommended action is to move to approve the district's dental insurance premium rates effective January 1, 2025, as presented. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Strife Oji. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ellison.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife Oji.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcan.
Aye.
Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. And the final is the life and long-term disability insurance.
Yep. And so here, whenever we make a change, it causes disruption, so we never do that lightly. We have a significant opportunity in terms of savings here to move from the standard to Lincoln Financial. And so because of that, we are making the recommendation to make that change for both of those programs.
The recommended action is to switch long-term disability and life insurance carrier from the standard to Lincoln Financial, effective January 1, 2025, as presented. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Beloit and a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Daniels. Any questions or comments? Just a real quick question, Mr. Mons. So when the district makes a choice to make these changes, is it strictly a financial decision, or?
We look at both service and the finances when we look at that, so it's not purely financial. However, in this case, there was a significant financial opportunity in making that move, in making this move.
Thank you. Ms. Strife Oji.
What is the impact of making that switch on the employee?
The impact of making this switch will really just be, you know, it could mean an additional system login change. For the most part, with this kind of a switch, though, that's really all that an employee is going to experience. If we currently have somebody that's experiencing claims through long-term disability, for instance, typically, they're going to remain where they were as that runs its course. And so there's not significant change in that regard.
Right. Seeing none, no other comments or questions, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ellison.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife Oji.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcan.
Aye.
Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels.
And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we'll move into our second operational item, E2. And so this is action on the school board policies. The first reading of these policies was in September. We are looking at approving policies 507, 507.5, 532, 608, 616, 620, and 806. We usually approve these all in one fell swoop. So if I could please get a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Arcan and a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Strife Oji. Any comments or questions about any of these policies? Ms. Daniels.
I just want to thank again the Policy Committee for working on these so effecably, I guess, because it takes a lot of time and the wording and everything, all the changes that have come over the last, I'd say, year, has meant that there's a lot of long meetings. And administrative assistant, who, you know, goes over them with a fine-tooth comb and adds every comma and period and makes us easier for us then to read and know where the changes are.
Dr. Newmaster.
And I would second that and also say, I love the fact that we keep in alignment with state requirements as well as our goals. And I think it's more readable every time you go through it, as the language changes. And it's not always easy to read policies, but these make sense. And I do like the way we envision and- But these make sense, and I do like the way we envision and say things. It's pretty clear. Thank you to all who work on it.
Any other comments or questions? All right.
Yeah, he's gonna-
Okay. Sorry. All right, so we already have a motion and a second, so all in favor of approving the school board policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, and the motion passes. Thank you. And then this is the final item on our agenda is Board Forum. Board Forum is an opportunity for board members to share things that are going on in the district that relates to their roles as board members, anything that the board would like to share. Ms. Daniels.
Want to say Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day to all our community and citizens and peace on this day. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thompson.
And with that, I would like to just read something that I wrote today in honor of Indigenous Peoples' Day. As an ancestor of several indigenous peoples, including the Dakota, Sioux, Sisseton, Anishnaabe, and Ojibwe peoples, I would like to acknowledge that the unceded lands of our school's district communities are the lands of my ancestors, the Medwakatin Sioux. Treaties were used to steal the lands with promises of payment that were never received. The genocidal state policies resulted in the violent enforced removal of Dakota people in Minnesota. A quote, "Be exterminated or be driven forever beyond the borders of Minnesota." Bounties were offered for the killing of Dakota men, women, and children. Colonel Richard Henry Pratt established one of the many Indian boarding schools, and a famous quote of his, one that is famous, as you will hear, for the atrocities that it asked him people to commit, is one that I am reminded of today and every day in my job as an Iquiguardian ad litem for the state of Minnesota. And that quote is one that I find is really powerful in some of the horrific acts that were committed against my ancestors. And he said, "Kill the Indian, save the man." Some new archaeological data that the White Bear Lake Historical Society was part of discovering shows that the lands of our community were inhabited by my ancestors since at least the 1600 AD, and they are still here today, proud and rich in culture and protection for their land and their people. And I would ask our community to find a way to learn more about the indigenous peoples who continue to enrich this area with their teachings. There are many ways one can learn more about their native community members. A quick research online will garner a great many results, and I hope you will come away with a greater understanding of the horrific crimes that were committed against our ancestors in the past and that are still occurring in the present day, and find a way to help change for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for Board Forum? Well, thank you all so much for all the work that was put into homecoming and just making the unification of the high school, just such a joyful experience. It's been just a really wonderful start to the school year. And happy MEA. I hope everybody takes a nap. With that, I would like to call for a motion to adjourn.
Chair Ellison, I move for an adjournment.